This conference will now be recorded.
Senator.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner Bowles.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Minutes will show that Commissioner Gandy is not present.
Don't.
Hi, your name is please. Lord, I want to thank you for this evening in Northland. Thank you for us gathering here today as good friends, good neighbors, Lord, good people that are concerned about this community, Lord, as well as our employees, that show up here every other week to take their extra time, Lord, and to share their thoughts and their good feelings and their positive feelings that which direction we need to go as well. Lord, I want to thank you for the rain we just recently had, Lord, and thank you for all the good economics that we've been receiving here, Lord, and our good GRTs to help our recovery efforts, Lord. Lord, I ask you to continue to guide us, Lord, in this direction, Lord. It's a good positive one. There's a lot of hurdles we still need to make, Lord, but I feel that we're headed in the right direction because you're leading us with your hand, Lord, and I really appreciate that, and I think we all do appreciate you. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, infinite in its essence. I pledge allegiance to the state of New Mexico, the state of the federal, our differences among united cultures. Next. Thank you. I'm the chief of Florida for school on the agenda, direction.
I'd like to make a motion to approve of the agenda.
Please have a motion in a second. Spark the approval as written, by the agenda as written. Further discussion? Not yet.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner White. Yes. Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Make the motion reconsider minutes of August 22nd of 2022.
Have a motion in a second for the adoption of the minute of August 22nd. Any discussion, any corrections? If not, Shannon.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Commissioner White. Yes. Commissioner Giudice.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. All right. Move to staff reports. Ms. Shannon, would you like to start?
Mr. Commissioner's, I want to say, report that we received a check from travelers or insurance carrier on the damage on the buildings. And it was $191,630. And we are looking at applying that towards including the senior center roof repair based on what Mr. Hand told us. That was the most critical building that we needed to take care of. So we'll be going through the procurement process or hopefully going through C E S to get that done.
Did we also receive a copy of the adjusted report?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I need to see how they basically, whether they total proved or whether they, you know, the condition which they now have been stated, so that will affect our interest. Do need to look at that. I know. Dr. Martinez, do we want to have a, do we just want to do that in regular state commission? Do we want to do a meeting on that to discuss that? Do you want to handle it internally? How you want to do it at this point?
Well, I would prefer if we would have handled that at a commission meeting. I know she mentioned $191,000. And then there's some issues with our insurance company and something that we need to discuss. But with that amount of money, I think we need to move forward with G R P.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that at all. I was just saying, we probably need to invite our insurance agent.
Okay.
To come to whatever meeting we put that at and have her address how that's going to affect our policy possibly.
Okay.
And have them move forward.
I can definitely invite her to attend the next meeting.
Also, I do have some documents that need to be signed by all of you, so. Thank you.
Were you able to get the one roof repaired the other day? Were they able to?
I don't think, I never heard from them, so.
Oh, okay. We're supposed to be here.
Never taken care of or not, and I hadn't heard from.
Mayor Bowles. I work. Anybody?
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to let y'all know that we did budget hearings last week with each department in, Commissioner White in there. Also, Melissa and I worked on a little financial statement. It basically just shows the revenues, payroll, and expenses that we spin out in August just to kind of give you guys some kind of little idea of what's going on. We still have some issues that we're still trying to work out, so the report will get a little better as we, I don't know, our issues with our statements and our balance sheets and things like that. I just kind of wanted to show y'all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Tracy, can you explain to the commission the role D F A is playing in this process, where we're at today? I know we had the discussion this morning about when are we going to eventually get to quote unquote true numbers? Can you explain to the commission that entire process and what F B R is doing? I know he's here now, but if you could elaborate and let the commission know where we're at and what are our next steps?
Michael, I can't say his last name.
Senator.
Senator. He worked on the last report and the budget, and there was some adjustments that we're going to have to do and stuff. He's the one that said that our balance sheets are, sheets are, I mean, we're just, they're not good numbers right now. So we're going to have to iron all that out before we can go any further. And Ed's here, and he said that with the time limit that we have and the stuff that we have, we're going to need Ed to help clean up that stuff. So that's what we're working on, trying to clean it until we can give you good numbers, actual good, good numbers. These came off of our reports from Tyler. And I think, you know, they're good numbers, but I would like to get to a point where everything's ironed out, everything's good, and we can give you true blue, you know what I'm trying to say, just good, good numbers. And we're working on that, and it's going to take a little bit of time. So.
Was he referred to this fiscal year or last fiscal year or a combination?
Well, they're still trying to finish all of June stuff, getting all of June stuff closed out and dealt with because there's just, I don't like to use the word a mess, but there's a mess. And we're trying to clean up.
Exactly.
And we're going into this year, we're still, you know, everything falls on over and we're trying to clean it up.
At least we're right there in June, not two years back.
Yes. I mean, it's four years worth of mess, and it's just going to take some time to get there. And I know you guys want numbers, and I understand that we're doing our best.
Okay, it was my understanding that his firm was going to be here to help prepare for the audit.
They are.
So kind of give us a priority list. I mean, our audit is due December 50th. It'll take at least 45 to 60 days to finalize that once the auditor begins that process. So he.
They're working on stuff, they're pulling stuff, and they're going through it, and they're trying to make sure that everything's together like it's supposed to be, that, you know, our eyes are daughters of teeth across, and then they're going to submit it to the auditor, and he's hoping to have all that done by the first of October. And that way, the auditors have time to do their end of it. And then, like I said, in October, we have another D F A report due, and Melissa and myself are going to do that report. And, you know, we're going to have adjustments and things like that to do.
Are you going to have Michael assist you on that?
Yes.
But not.
He will. Yes, he will not be doing the work. Melissa and myself will be doing the work, but he will, you know, he's going to be there for questions or whatever we have. Because that's important, you know, to get that D F A on time as well as the audit.
I think we're just right there in June, so 30 days. Fiscal year closes July 1st, so they're right there by June, so it's just 30 days.
And it's not a whole lot, but it's just things, you know, we have to get done in June, and then that way we can move over and start taking care of the problems that carry it over. Because like I said, it's four years and a mess, and we're trying to clean it up.
Yes. While we're in that area, we talked about, part of that was establishing the fund value. I know it's a mess, but you thought at that time that by September 1st, we'd be able to do that because I know that there's groups that are waiting on that so that they could, they know where they stand so they can move forward. How are we standing on that?
We can't, we can't get those numbers until the stuff's cleaned up, the sheets are cleaned up, the balance sheets, the amounts. I mean, I can, we can tomorrow have a conference, and we can talk to Michael about it if you guys want to, and you can see where he stands on it. If there's anything that's working on, it's exactly what you have.
I understand. I'm just.
He, as well, is one that told me, he said, we cannot give those numbers because everything's a mess. We've got to clean up everything, and that's.
I understand.
What we're standing.
It's, but it's not, okay. The D F A and that particular state, it can only deal with the numbers that we give them. They're not, he's not an expert type or whatever in ours now. So I would say that it's going to be more of an in-house establishing of those numbers and figuring out what things, but I don't know, maybe he is a group, I don't know, but, you know, typically, D F A works with the numbers that you give them, just like an auditor. It's not, not doing cleanup. Now, I know Ed is here, again, I realize he's here, just don't know how much of his time is going to be to use on this.
All I know is that he, Michael, said that we, he has spoken with Ed, and Ed's aware of what's needing to be done. And so Ed's supposed to be digging in with us and trying to help us, is this stuff cleaned up?
Okay.
So.
What is Mr. DeGuerre's, how long is he going to be here?
He's going to be here till Thursday. I think he said Thursday evening, Friday evening, so. We got schedule work.
I know, and I want to think, you know, that you inherited this just like everybody's. So it, you know, it's not your master, you know, but at some point, we are personally in nearly six months and still running blind. And I'm not picking on you, I am not saying Tracy's or whatever, but it is imperative that we've got to get to a point where we can make decisions based on where the financial position of the city. Fortunately, I mean, this is, this is great for a month, we at least know that we operated more, but my question is, there are a lot of yearly or annual payments that we make, you know, insurance or whatever, and I'm just using that as an example, that would not be factored in to our black number here. You know, they could actually put us in the red, so we still don't know where we're operating. We know that we have money in the bank, we know that, we know based on this, what we brought in, you know, what we sent out, that we expended during the month, but in reality, we really don't know where we stand financially. And, you know, we're, there's a lot of things that are going on in the city that we are expending above and beyond our normal. And so, again, I would love to say that, you know, that we can be patient, and we are, but, and I know you have several other things coming, but we've got to get to the bottom of this as quickly as possible, and I just think that having Ed here for however many days it is and expecting him to help with the audit and with, with this situation and anything else, it may be, it may not be feasible for him to be able to come up with a whole lot. So, yeah, I will back off now. I mean, I'm sorry, it's just that we.
I think, Mayor, you need to understand that last year, we didn't even have a treasurer for over a year. Over a year. We didn't have a city manager for over a year. So there was a lot of direction stacked we didn't have. And we just fashioned everything and continued to address all our liabilities, ensure that everything was current. Prior to that, the previous treasurer left with a mess, and so we were in state idol for over a year. And what Ed is doing, Tracy's doing, is factoring all, but yesterday, ensuring that the number we have today is, relates to everything we did yesterday. You know, I feel that, I understand, and like I said, if we're right here in June, we're just, we're there because fiscal year closes July 1st, the last fiscal year, so if they're right there in June, that means we're here. I mean, we're, we're really need to be, so I'm expecting within less, but by the time of August 2nd, we're ready because if that's what you're saying, June, we're, it's only one month in the last fiscal year, so we should be good, but I, you know, factored everything, the Tyler system, everything that's been out there, it's just, it was a mess. I mean, I.
No worries.
Oh, you know, I just, I mean, I thought both for, we thought many times and different things. When I, when I, they handed the votes over, that number changed only four times in one week. Sorry, it was just, so that was over a year ago. So. So I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that this will be.
Okay, well, and I don't doubt, okay, all right, I'm going to redirect, I'm sorry. Again, please, I'm not sure. I'm going to redirect this to, to the city manager. Okay.
Dr. Martinez, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I have a question for Tracy. Do you have a timeframe when you will have, and I keep using true numbers, what is that timeframe? We're, like the mayor mentioned, we're already in September. Is it possible that we could have D F A present? We just, I understand the situation that we're in, but eventually, and we've had this discussion, what would be the timeframe to have those specific numbers that we have to present to the commission? Is, is there a specific timeframe that we are looking at in your discussions with Ed and Michael Steve?
I mean, we're just, honestly, I mean, we're trying, and that's all I can say, we're trying to get stuff cleaned up. It's just going to take, I mean, it's going to take a little bit of time. It's not like tomorrow or six months. I mean, we're trying. We have to keep up with daily stuff plus clean up all this mess, and we're doing that. But the thing is, this is such a mess, and it honestly is a mess. And then we didn't have anybody doing anything for a year, so we're having, you know, and we're not behind, but we're having to clean up mistakes and problems and.
Would it be possible if we could have Michael from D F A present at a next commission meeting to give us additional information?
Maybe.
If we could have him on a Zoom call, I know we can't travel from San Antonio here, but just to get additional information on what the state is required of us.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
You think we could?
Yep.
I would also like to say that I have been offered monetary help if we could, if we could, if we need help to hire help, then that would be possible also. So, you know, if, if they are busy just keeping up with the current, and, you know, again, Ed has been a lot of help, you know, maybe we need to look at extending his services to help get to the bottom of this, but in the meeting we had with him, I didn't really get that he felt like he could sort through that.
Is he still here? Can you check if he's there, if you don't mind, Mr.?
No, absolutely. I'd like to hear from him.
But Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I think that's an alternative if we can.
I just want to make sure everybody knows it's there. I mean, if we need to bring in some help to assist them to get caught up and get there, and I realize we're close, but, you know, we're, we're already into this year, two months, two and a half months now into fiscal year 2023. And so sooner or later, as in all projects that are going on in the city, we've got to have a close, we've got to have a date when we can say, okay, we're ready to move forward. And I'm not, again, I, I'm not trying to pick on the financial director, and I realize that she's only been here two and a half months, effectively a little over two. And we've just got to have some sort of a timeframe. But anyway, I will, I will.
I want to move forward. I'll make contact with Michael from D F A and see if he can present at our next meeting just to get the state's perspective on where we're at city-wise financially. I think that's important because I know he did assist with the D F A reports, and I know she mentioned that she plans to work on it on her own next one with some guidance, but we've got to get to a point where our own people can actually do that report and submit it. And so.
Absolutely.
Yes.
You'll be right.
And then our, our ultimate goal, I know we've had this discussion, we want to make sure that our audit report is turned in on time.
On time, yeah.
I think that is critical, and it's due on December 15th. And I know Ed is working on providing financial data to Willie in Columbus, and so I explained to both of them that our goal is to have that audit turned in on time. We know how critical that is, so.
Absolutely, and that was part of my point. You know, you're fixing to be not for 60 days out of the next three months. So, you know, asking you to do all of this above and beyond doing your D F A quarterly reports, doing your, assisting the auditor because she's going to have a lot of questions that you're going to be dealing, you're going to be losing a lot of the time you have to facilitate, it's not very, you know, if we need to bring some help, and obviously, we can ask Ed if he wants to undertake that, or if we want to look for somebody local or whatever, we'll try to get you some help.
Okay. You'll be right.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Hello, we're here, but you know, we're good, right? Hello, tell us. You got some questions? Well, I would like to, I wanted to just redirect so that Tracy didn't feel like I was on top of her at this point. You know, we understand that you are here assisting, first of all, you were brought here primarily to assist getting us ready for the audit that will be due in December and getting, making sure that our auditor will have all of the financial that's still need to complete that audit. Then we were talking about the condition of our current finances, and now I understand that you're assisting that, and I was just going to say, can you give us an idea of maybe the, as she says, the true method of the situation? Can you? I've been in meetings where you were there and stated, but I would like here, so that everybody can hear, you know, kind of where we're at with the current Tyler situation, our current mess. I don't know, I don't know a better word because we all realize that that's what it is, so.
Well, let's go back when I was first engaged or approached at the time, it's fair to you. You lost your finance director around May of 2020. And then the assistant tried to work with the accounting for a couple of months, and then he left around September. Okay. The auditor for the year, beyond for the audit year 63020, noticed some problems. And the two prior finance directors did not make any improvements to the system. So then they continued, and what the city did, I believe at that time that they did not have a city manager. And so Tracy was hired around May.
In the range.
Around there. So they were just trying to get the bills paid, and that was the big problem. And so they were just, just trying, and they really didn't have any guidance with somebody to lead them in the direction of what like a controller or chief financial officer who understood the overall accounting regardless to governmental. The same governmental accounting, you're concerned with, for example, the general fund and all the special revenue funds and then capital projects, and then your enterprise funds, utilities, solid waste, ambulance. And so it was just dumping information into the system. Well, the system can only do so much. I mean, you know, garbage in, garbage out, basically. So I started working around January. The first priority was trying, I could tell even the, from the audit report from 63020, that the auditor criticized that the city did not even know its cash, true cash flow. So they had so, so much recorded on the gold and so much financial statements on the audit report, and so there was these like two or three numbers on what's really true cash. So one of the first instances that I put my work to get done was to try to determine what was the true cash as of 63020. And then started working with the bank reconciliations through 63021. And so that took from January until about April or so. And then in early May of 22, then I brought my partner in and another staff member, and then we started focusing hard on the audit to get ready, all information ready for, for the auditor as of 63021. And so she was, she had told the state auditor's office that they would submit the audit by 6, by 21, 23, 2021. So during the month of May, we spent a lot of time getting the information as best we could to the point where she was comfortable. And so she submitted her audit report and it got approved, and she came and gave me attention. Okay, during this period, I've been working with Tracy to get the account, the cash balances brought forward, continue to be forward. So it did not work much during the month of July on the city. And so what. And so what, what the process is now is she's got, the city's got the cash reconciled through the end of, of June of twenty twenty-two. So we can tell where the cash is in the bank, where it's reported in general, that all matches up. We also recorded the city around, around April, March, April, refinanced to the New Mexico Finance Authority. And so I spent a lot of time working with finance authority because they, they needed help. They needed helping in understanding what they were reporting to us. And so eventually we got that figured out as far as how much cash was available for the, for the magistrate court building as of June thirty, how much was available, not the span, but the balance of the, of the loans were and all that. So that all got finished. And I, I believe with that, you were involved in a lot of the emails, you saw the transactions back then. So what we're doing now is trying to, so the, the general ledger as of six thirty twenty-two reconciles to cash. But then there's a lot of things that need to be adjusted to get it back to where it needs to be. For example, I need to share this with Tracy yet. I know that, that there were some changes in staffing and everything, but within law enforcement fund, I was looking at the reconciliation. I noticed that, like, the grant revenue was like thirty-two thousand dollars. But then at the end of, at the end of the fiscal year, only showed seven thousand. So I said, well, what happened here? So I ran a year-to-date general ledger of just that fund. So what the city had done, the accounting, um, most of it had happened in June. Instead of recording expenditures as an expense, they're reducing the grant rev. So, I mean, there was just those things in there that if you don't report properly, you can't. So, for example, that fund, you need to show thirty-two thousand dollars of grant revenue. And since, and since you don't net them out, things want to count and show seven thousand dollars of spread revenue. So that's what we're doing now. But the whole apple, one of the things, um, we're working on today is trying to determine what the true accounts payable were as of June thirty, uh, but the accounts receivable reconciling all the, the B R A reports to, to the general ledger. And so we're getting the audit ready. We've got trial balances, we're getting all the information ready. And then I'll, we'll send all that up to Neon and then she'll, she'll verify your audit and do whatever she wants to do. Once that's completed, at the same time we're with Tracy, to try to get her, um, July and August, does what she needs to really do to be able to do the, the DFA report on a timely basis. First quarter of the current fiscal year, which is, um, and September of, of, well, in two weeks, it's due on October thirty-first. So she needs to have that reconciled in there. But she needs good beginning balances to be able to say, and then it'll say, because all, the, the report basically to the DFA is, what is your cash balances at the end of June? How, how much did you collect in that? How much do you have there? What is your cash balance? That's what they're trying to monitor throughout the year. So that's. Now, and she's mentioned to me, and I, I've seen the list and to, um, and to request it, like, uh, the fund balances. They, um, once we get the, the records where they need to be, then we can tell you as of June thirty, what the cash balance, fund balance was. And then you can start moving forward. She'll be able to tell you at the end of September, what the cash fund balance is. So it just, it just take it. Earlier today, I was talking to city manager, the county department. I said, it was just a big hole that you guys dug yourselves into. And it's taking some time to climb out of it and get back caught up even. So then you, you have the accounting records that, that show the, you can't just, just report stuff and then everything's fine. I don't know if that answers your question.
Mr. Mayor, from your point, what, where, where would, where, what do you think the date would be to where we, where we need to be? Right now? I mean, that's, that's the basic question I know with everybody is, when do you figure everybody, everything will be in line and then we'll start seeing?
I would say about October thirty-first. Because, you know, my goal is trying to get the, the auditor by the end of September. I mentioned that one, the Dell, that we're trying to get everything to the auditor by the end of September. And that's really, at the end of September, to be able to give the auditor all the information they need, that's the best you can do as far as I go in this discussion. I mean, that's really, your really current. And where did that get with the auditor, October, November, two months to come in and, and you giving them really good information? That gives them time to get everything done that they need, okay? And then, so you asked, when will we, current, when will we begin the reports? The goal is, is once we get June done into the auditor, then the July and August should just fall right into mind. Because it's just matter reconciling and just getting, and so then you'll have September. And so then you'll be, the reports for July, August, September. The auditor, you got those three months, and now your current each month, you can just go one month at a time. So at that point, our services, you know, just every once in a while, call, she needs something. But the thing is, unfortunately, in the state of New Mexico, and I've been doing this for forty-plus years. Sometimes governments, governing boards, um, I'm not saying that here, but sometimes you don't put a real strong emphasis on the accounting. They're worried about lease services, they're worried about fire, they're worried about picking up the trash, they're worried about all these services they have to provide citizens. But yet, in the accounting profession and within government, everything gets more complicated. You have to have people educated to understand how it all works so that you can work with the auditors. So it's just, it's important, the accounting's important.
I have already agreed with you that, and I know why, um, sometimes people, they, they just think, well, you know, it's all, we're paying our bills. We got good luck in our, I can see we have four million dollars, we're good, paying our bills. And, but, like, for example, in the city, I know just by looking at the records, um, yeah, you got like two or three million, four million, whatever. But then I see that one, you got one point four million of, um, of COVID money that really, it's not really, you're holding it, it's in your bank, but you've got to somehow either spend it or send it back. You know, at, at some point, you got to, I mean, you can't just say, oh, well, great, we got it. The federal government's going to want some sort of accountability, absolutely. So that's why it's important to understand the various components to each one.
I ask you one recommendation. So if we have a, a treasurer that gives us bad data, how are we supposed to counteract that in terms of, I know we have our, our annual audit throughout the state. What would your recommendations be? Because that, that is a hurdle that, that we came across is when all, after COVID happened, we found out we were given, given bad data for years. And so how would we counteract it? Would we do an audit, internal audit, uh, other than the annual audit? Or what would your recommendations be?
Well, I think, first of all, the audit, the audit is very, first of all, if, if I'm on the governing board, and our audit's not being done on time, I don't, I'm not concerned. What's going on? Why can't we get it? Then, once it's presented to me, what are the problems? You know, is the auditor really giving us a good valid picture of what's going on? If you go back and look at, at, you know, you change auditors, I believe, when he was, um, the first year that Neon did it, you start looking at her, her findings. You know, if the auditor's being honest and, or, you know, providing you with good information, then you can start as a governing board and start asking the finance director. Hey, why do we have this? Why, why don't, why haven't we cleaned up this audit finding that's four years old? Why can't we get that to resolve? For example, there is an audit finding regarding fixed assets, capital assets, you can't, you know, why can't we get that cleaned up? You know, so that.
I have an answer on that. No new assets have been added since twenty eighteen, then have been taken off since twenty twenty, and no depreciation from twenty twenty-one to twenty-two.
Well, the, there was depreciation reflected in the, in the audit report for twenty-one. But, but, so what's, what's really important, that, that, in, in regards to fixed assets, is what, what's really important is to have a list of all the fixed assets. And then to send it out to the department and say, okay, we're showing, for example, we've got twenty-five of these units. Is that really, we still have those or have they been sold or what happened to them? Can you, so someone has to actually physically go out and conduct, uh, observation. And, and the state statute requires that for all of the New Mexico entities. And if you don't do it, you know, well, we don't know, you know, and then sometimes, you know, stuff kind of just walks away. So that, that's part of internal controls and why you try to establish controls. And one of the controls is to go out and verify that this, let's say, and it's too much for the finance department. Maybe if you're a large entity like, say, the city of Albuquerque, maybe you have four or five people working on capital assets. And that's, they're, so job twenty-four, seven, go out and check the assets, okay? But for a small entity, you know, what you do is you, here's your list, and you take it to the fire chief, you give it to the police chief, you give it to, um, people in the water department, wastewater and say, okay, these are assets we're showing, you guys still have them. So, um, but back to your original, where, you know, all of you represent the citizens that you come from various backgrounds. Some of you have, some don't. Key is, is that's why you have the audit, you know, that was at one point in New Mexico, that the auditor, when you're presented to, to the governing boards and the state auditor, realize that they have problems in San Fe and the, uh, the, I think it was the school district. They said, well, we never knew about the audit. Well, and so the, um, state auditor said, hey, the auditor needs to come in front of you and present that. And my recommendation to this city council is that, is that you have your auditor stand here for you to explain it and go in detail. And, and, you know, because we got kind of lax with, with the pandemic, well, let's just do it over the internet. And, you know, and you kind of lose something in that translation. We want, we want good information, that's what we're paying you, that's a lot of dollars to do that, so. Because we don't know as, as, as a commissioner, you know, my specialty is in the old field. And I'm just trying to help the citizens here in the community. And I'm relying on the, from the professionals in the county department. So I need you as the auditor to tell me, are they doing their job? And the warning sign is if we're not getting timely information, then we know it. But that is directly what happened because you lost your finance. And I don't know how good quality finance people.
One thing, one thing I assure you, this one Neon in Dover, that was her first year, so she had her first set of eyes on the way our finances. And she gave us a, a good meeting report. And I assure the public as well as our new, two new commissioners, this board took action, that's why all the resignations happened. And, uh, and then we started fresh again. And I always tell her, but I said, if the resignations didn't come and we continue to have the same stamping, that's us. But when we read that audit, we knew it was bad. And we knew it, it, we needed to make changes. And so that's why the resignations started. So this board did take action, uh, but it comes with consequences too. When you eliminate everybody from the top, you got to start, and so, uh, you know, we do, we did our, I think we did our good job and, uh, and do what we did. Uh, but we are cleaning it up and like you just mentioned, October thirty-one will be where we need to be. It's taken us almost two years. But, uh, I'd rather start clean and fresh and, and see this new direction at the scene in a good direction instead of a wandering direction, so I really appreciate what you can do.
Is it October or September?
October.
So we can get that September, the effective, power. That's due on. Yes.
You want to have it done by the end of September?
The end of October. I want it to happen by the end of September or close there, on the October fifth or whatever, is all the information to the auditor. It stays there twenty-two. And then, and then July, August and September got to fall in line right thereafter. And they, they should fall in line because hopefully they, they mess it up too much between July, August and September.
I know you mentioned September, okay, it's a good number to add your information if you're going to need to submit.
Yeah, I would suspect, well, it, it's really important to get June thirty, twenty-two. So we can send it off to, to the auditor. Then you have a good beginning. And then you start the month of July of twenty-two with, for example, in the general fund, you know, what our cash balance was, we collected so much money, we spent so much money, and now this is our end cash balance. And then that just rolls.
Is that part of where we keep the good numbers on the end of June?
Well, we're real, trying real hard to get that by the end of September, um, first, first part. That's, that's, that's the goal. And we're, we've got, I've got really some good numbers so far, but we just, now we're, we're starting to find to, like, for example, accounts payable. You know, if we were, if I was to go to the system right now and say, I would say print me out the accounts payable as of June thirty of twenty-two. Well, maybe, for example, that would be anything entered in as of June thirty of that year. So, for example, if they got a bill on, let's say that they purchase something that fosters, and they got it, they bought for the senior citizen. They, they bought, um, something like, say, on June ten, they got invoices. Then they turn around and insert it into, into the accounting system. So we know what it is as of June thirty. But then sometimes vendors, they don't send their statements until the end of the month, first part of the month. And so when they entered in, they, they're showing that at the end that they got it in July. So the timing difference, that's why you have to actually go through the invoices and check your audits and see where. You're making progress, not slow, um, but compared to what it was. I mean, it was, it wasn't that true. And as far as the fund balances, you know, um, you run basically a cash basis, that's, that's the way the state wants you on the budget, on the cash basis. So what your, what your cash is, you know.
That's Martin.
Just in a minute. In respect to your timeframe or clarification, when will Tracy be able to present our accounting numbers to go even? For what period? As soon as possible, you're talking about October, you're not October, is that correct? Or, or what appears?
First quarter.
Can you just give us a good cash balance?
Yes, give us a good cash balance, that's what the first.
Or, or like today?
No, the first quarter.
When will she get to the point you'll know what today's cash balance?
This fiscal year, Mr. Perera said that the first quarter of this fiscal year, we will have our numbers.
10/31.
October 31.
Okay.
That's what he said. For the first quarter, for the first quarter, and that's just from the numbers.
I can give you cash balances as of June 30, if you want to. So, I mean, you know, I, um, I mean, those numbers shouldn't change, because cash is cash, right? But that's the thing that's going to change now is accounts payable, accounts receivable, classes, appreciation, and things like this. Now, eventually, what, what I would like is have Tracy do, or, or be able to see witness is, as a counselor, uh, White mentioned, that's our cash balance today. So get to the point where, okay, we're, we got it current, and she should be able to keep track every day. You know, we, today we deposited X amount of dollars, we spent that X amount of dollars, this is what we have. So that's, that's which it really worked. But when you're so far behind, you're just trying to catch up.
Okay, I want to ask one question based on what you just said, not this last one. You stated you could give, uh, good, a cash balance that is good through June the 30th to date.
Right, that, that was the numbers that Michael used for the, the favorable. Except for one number. Okay, he, he found that we missed, I think it was in the wastewater or something, somebody had incorrectly posted it to Western Conference Bank, and it showed like a negative $3 in the balance or something like that. Somehow just somebody misposted and nobody's checking, so it's there. So he reported, he said he told you, if I remember correctly. Well, I'm not going to adjust it, because that's what you have in your records, so I'm going to show this minus $3. That's whatever that number is. But the numbers he reported on June 30, cash balances, he picked them up right off the general ledger, and I had already reported everything, except I don't know if he picked up, because we were still trying to figure out the bonding, the refinance, the magical report, and all that. So I don't know if he picked that up, but I could give you this.
No, I'm just trying to figure out where we truly are for this, so.
That's where you're.
We feel, based on that, based on what everybody said, we feel good that we are through, far sure through the end of June, June 30 of 2022. Yes, we feel, we all feel confident about that, okay? We also feel confident that we're fixing to agree that we feel confident that approximately over the 30th, and I'll look, our first meeting after that would be, uh, November the 8th, that we would be able to present first quarter ending balance, or a, a financial report based on first quarter of fiscal year 2023, and somewhere in that time, okay? Dr. Martinez, is that a comfortable date for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Tracy, so did, I will, whatever, is that good for you?
Yes.
It has to be, because we have to report, we have to approve that, the first quarter.
I really, we've approved a lot of things that we knowingly knew that were accurate.
Well, the state reports, they're the ones that changed, not us. Michael's the one that did the state reports or reports.
I realize that.
How many recorder reports, are you, the last two or the last three?
He did the last three.
He did the last three, so that came from the state. So whatever.
Did you build your information?
Yeah.
Absolutely. He's not going to take responsibility for it. He did the reports, but, but, yeah. Okay, well, thank you for your information and your time. Okay, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, Tracy, that was not, I hope you don't take that personally. I just want to get it out there, so everybody understands where we're at, where we're trying to achieve, so I appreciate it. Anything for us?
Yeah, I'm good.
Dean. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager. Three items, we've had five new applications for position of police officers since our last meeting, which means we may in the near future be able to fill our free authorized open positions. That would bring our officer count to 21, which would mean that by the time these officers have finished their training in mid-2023, we would have four officers for all four shifts, which is the minimum we need to operate efficiently. Uh, number two, we're very excited to announce the reinstatement of our K9 program on a limited basis through the use of funds we received from a national opioid manufacturer lawsuit settlement. Funds would cover the purchase and training for a new K9 and the training of his handler, as well as the cost for about one year of food and debt business. It should be stressed that this dog will be used strictly for narcotics intervention and apprehension. We've already had three officers express interest in this program. Operation Cleanup continues, we have started tearing down one of the two worst properties, both of which are located in District 2. We are waiting as asbestos testing results for the large two-story building on Sixth and Harrison. Also, we expect to be able to finish the asbestos abatement and demolition of the structure right here, I happen to be in Main Street. You'll really be, which is half a dollar. We continue to work with delinquent water customers through a series of progressive enforcement actions. Most of the time, this results in delinquent customers coming in and paying the bill, or at least setting up a payment program. I'll be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Oh, you. I don't have any questions, but again, uh, I would take the command you, as far as home enforcement, uh, probably the police department, anybody else that is, uh, is involved with Operation Cleanup. I understand it takes time, resources, manpower, uh, finances to do a project in this magnitude. This is something that wasn't, uh, this isn't something that happened overnight, as far as what's been, uh, where we are at the city, this isn't something that happened overnight. But I've been here in 2012, uh, moved to the city of Abington in 2017, 2017. Since I've been here, I've been a commissioner for a couple of years, I never seen anybody take the initiative, be proactive, do what you're doing. So that takes a, takes a lot, as far as coordination and everything else, so I, if, if you're not, I am proud of you.
Thank you, a lot of the credit goes to the city manager, it was his idea.
Yeah.
He empowered us to make some changes. I appreciate that.
I should, I'm proud of the, how you guys are doing, you know, it takes teamwork, that's pretty much everything. Appreciate that, you guys are doing a hell of a job.
Yes, I, I just want to pay everyone's attention that it was, uh, city attorney McMahon is the one that got us that opening. I received that, well, I received the email and I forwarded it on to him, and I said, is this, what is this? And he told me, Dave, you did, you need to get that taken, taken care of, so we did some.
Hey, that was a separate suit by AG.
Yeah, and I thought it was just a, a, an email, I said, is this a real email, or what is this?
From Nigeria.
Yeah, yeah. And I said, we need to print this or what? He said, no, you can get on it, we were only like a couple of weeks away from not getting any funding, Patrick, that system. He got it done, and I, you know, I just want to say that that's what he prints, dude, is, uh, getting that funding with Patrick. He took the initiative to tell me what it was about, to tell me, get, get on it, get it signed, and get it on the way. That's why you received that funding.
As I said, everybody involved, proud of everybody.
That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Chief, I have two questions. If you can, um, before commission, one of your issues, what occurred on our street and fold? And then Facebook, the gentleman, uh, the damage to Chapel Park, can you just give brief information on what has occurred on those two locations?
Right, and Mr. Boyston is here, King Harson Department, additional information. It seems like over the weekend, we had a, a break-in at the city pool, vandalism deal with the strips on copper wire. I guess the initial estimates is about $15,000 of damage or loss.
We're, we're still, uh, working on the estimates, working with IPS to get it quicker in our hands, so that way we know how much it's going to cost, but they did significant amount of damage, more damage.
It didn't produce. I think there's this gentleman was high enough to leave some of his blood behind. So we obtained DNA sample, which, yeah, that should help us maybe hold someone accountable. Here, um, other question, so two and a half weeks ago, we had a young man, not a juvenile, an adult, for what seems to be dawn dishwashing liquid into the fountain. We're not sure what, what he did, what he poured in, but it looks like he was dishwashing. Now, I, I've heard that the fountain used to loop in with the sprinkler system, but now is a closed recirculating system, but that doesn't explain how all the soap sluds got on the lawn. So I checked with Mr. Boyston today, as of today, it doesn't look like there's damage to the grass or the sprinkler system or the fountain. So unless there's damage, it doesn't fall, fall under the criminal, uh, act of criminal damage to property. But we know, we have an idea for the young man, he's just high enough to post pictures of himself on Facebook, so. It's again, better luck than boots.
But the bigger issue of it is, is vandalism, we're growing very high at ShopRell. You know, it gets to the point where me and my staff can't do upgrades, because at this point, we're wasting money. So.
One of the things Mr. Boyston and I have spoken about is installing cameras in the apartment, cameras that can't be stolen or tampered with, that can go to the cloud, that I can monitor, that he can monitor, you know, and may not be able to zoom up on the guy's face, but maybe we can get a nice display, it'll help us, but. Hate to see a nice apartment, well, you know, there's, there are efforts of trying to make it a nice apartment, just right.
Would you also state your, your shooter situation that's going to happen on October 15th?
And we are going to put it on PSA this week, Saturday, October 15th, will be an active shooter, um, training and simulation at the Lovington High School. This is being, uh, put on courtesy of the county sheriff's office and their personnel. We're going to get all, or most of our officers trained, Tatum is going to be there. It's going to be a big event, we haven't had one in seven years, um, and the schools are very involved. So look forward to it, everyone is involved, press is involved, invited, excuse me, um, and it should last the whole day.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, so we received a quote for our fire engine that's at City's Mark's in Lovet. Uh, perhaps they have to hold it in rebuild, it costs about $7,000. We, uh, state has given us the authorization to carry over the remaining state funds from last fiscal year, which was $206,000, I was told we had $40,000, uh, it's been all that, but. So according to the state, they said the fire department's authorized to use the fire protection fund money to be utilized for the acquisition of a used low mile, low hour, Class A pumper to replace one of our old outdated cars. We have, uh, Deco has sent the specs for a new Type 4 grass engine, which was part of the capital outlay. We had to have specs for that, and I have given that to, uh, we're listening to this slide. We have received our new state fire funds for the new year. This year, we're receiving $317,565. Uh, that'll be given in two installments, we did receive one in August, we received another one in February. Uh, those installments are $158,782 cents, which is $34,311 more than our previous years, which was $283,245, which is good, because we're going to use that on our engine that we're, but we will still have, should have somewhere in surplus of, uh, $7,001. So our numbers for August are as follows, EMS, we had 230, 279 EMS calls, 57 inter facility transfers, 17 airport runs, transfers, um, DOA cancel refusals, we had 96, we have 11 table calls, and 15 fire calls. So that's all I have.
Yeah, I got a question, I was, uh, with the new hospital opening up, I was like, could it be affected transfers? It's very run enough, well, because I have, I was like, could I, could you, I can answer you?
I'm going to be honest, I don't think it's really going to affect us that much, because once they fill that one up, we got to ship them right below. And I don't see that one taking long to fill, because it's not going to have that big of a.
And your, your comfort?
Yes.
I was just a bit sure that I had that.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to change really all that much. I mean, it may for a couple of months, but unless it's full, they got us in some. And we're averaging four to six transfers this year.
Right. That was on the 13th.
Any other questions? Appreciate it. Yes. Make sure, bro.
Again, buy vocal, shop vocal, eat vocal. If we can keep doing that, it'll be good, in the right directions. Make sure, pre-orders. We were talking about Operation Cleanup, I know we went around the area, one day we went looking around, those, talking to you, but downloads only, have you checked into that yet? Are we going to do anything about that?
Commercial forward?
Right.
I will meet with Christina, I know, um, I'm waiting for them to complete specific projects, and then we will move on to commercial district.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to find out, so.
Yes.
I could put a thank you out to Crystal, as far as the, uh, again, about a half thousand people complimenting the signs for the truck room. I told them, I said, don't compliment me, I'm just mouth, you're the one that deserves the credit, so, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
That's great.
I'm good in there.
I have Mr. Patrick Iglesira coming tomorrow from Skoda to meet with Bernard and I, see if we can get our Skoda updated, talking to each other, figuring out our water system.
Daily?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Dr. Martinez. Mr. Mayor, members.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I have one idea and then from there, as we move on, I'll step for any questions. I was, I met with Jay Lee the other day to schedule a meeting, I don't know if it's going to be a special meeting or a regular commission meeting, to discuss EDC, Main Street, the museum and the chamber, the possibility of, I don't know if the proper word is audit. I know, I don't, I know we had this discussion at the last meeting. And so I just wanted some feedback from the commission. When we set this meeting up, is it going to be a special meeting, a meeting during a commission meeting? And the big question, because I did receive a couple of phone calls, if we're going to move forward, where we will require these organizations to do a, I don't know if the audit is the proper word.
AUP.
AUP. Who's going to pay for the AUP? I think that, that was the, the big question. And so as I direct, give directive to Jay Lee, and I just wanted to get feedback from the commission, is that going to be an action item? What, what is, what is your, your, your thoughts? I know we want to schedule that meeting, but again, the concern is who's going to pay for all this? So with that said, if there, if you have any feedback, because I know, Mr. Mayor, we've discussed this, when we're going to set up that meeting, and I would prefer that we meet with all, everyone. If we have set up meetings, that could take up a lot of time. I think we should just have one meeting, but again, is that going to be an action item? And again, and I know I've repeated myself, but that's okay, the big question is who's going to pay for it? So with that said, I just wanted some directions.
Okay, let's say, let's take it one step at a time.
Yes, sir.
All right. The question whether we want to do it at regular commission, I don't think that's necessarily a good idea. Okay, because we tend to run pretty long meetings. So the next question is, if we want to do it as a special. One day, are we going to do it during the day, or do it during the evening? And I think some feedback from those groups would help because if we try to do it during the day, it's very convenient for uh city employees, but not so for boards that have jobs on.
Right, right.
So uh and I know we, we need to proceed with this, but um any ideas, thoughts from public? I mean, we'll open it up for anything here, if you're involved in this, you want to speak up, that'd be great.
I feel that, I feel that, I feel that we just need to have a meeting with commissions and, and the other four entities together and then iron it out. I think also the question where, what arises since we already approved the contract with them, will this take place next fiscal year or are we going to make adjustments to the contract during this? That is another big question.
And cost needs to be in that, right?
Well, it's hard to say cost because until we come up with our agreed upon procedures, which are the AUP part of this, uh it's going to be hard to estimate a cost, right? So I'd say we have our meeting, come up with that. And then we have them pick whoever they're going to ask for, or an RFP, that's the way they're going to do it. They would then get their, a memo back stating it would be just first three thousand dollars, whatever it is, five thousand dollars. And then we can look at it as far as uh who's going to pay for it, we would just pose that to the commission and then, so it'd be an action item after we come, after they have gotten feedback from the, from the accounting group that they're going to use. So I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a few weeks before we can accomplish, accomplish this. But until we get a meeting and we kind of state what we're looking for and what we want, then right now, we're shooting in the dark, so.
With September the nineteenth, five thirty, June.
What time on sorry?
Five thirty on September the nineteenth, Monday.
It's Monday, Monday.
It's today, twelve. That's Monday. I'm officially, I have another engagement, but. We'll, we'll, it'll be fine, okay? No, um. Thursday, okay, all right. I'm getting it, it's okay, so it's okay.
I'm available on that Thursday. Not the nineteenth.
There, commissioners, if I may, I mean, September's really, really high for me, would it be possible that September is for early October first to talk to us?
I just going to have to talk to all of them, okay, to find out.
Yeah, I'd say we may not be enough. Or every, uh if we move it, then I'd say uh October, October. There's no, there's not a sense of urgency in this, it's just, we need to move in this direction so that uh it, it'll be a continuing link for the next few years.
Okay.
And since this is the first time we've done it, then I think we need to make sure we do it for.
That's all.
Uh Ms. Ball?
Yeah, um with the cleanup thing we did and this was just inspection and I'm, both results yet, they haven't come in yet. I'm expecting them sometime this week. Uh we also were awarded uh two out of our three TPF contracts that we submitted for, or grants we submitted for. Um so tonight, one of those, one of my action items in tonight is for the wave, remember how I, I told you we would have applied that hardship over as soon as we were able? So that's why those are all back tonight. Uh the agreements themselves came in just late last week, so they will be on the next, uh for those uh the micro steel, slurry steel project and the overlay project, both were. And any question?
Oh, it's the third, sorry.
The third one was to design a couple of different roads and we have not heard back on that one yet. That one is taking a little longer for the state to look.
You heard it, they crystal, she was moving to Ashville. What was it going to be doing more?
Oh, no, um I've talked to the state and my grant has not got back with me yet on that, on that design of that. So I'm still working with an DOT on if they have any objections to us doing that. And then as soon as I get back from them, I'll come do best with the funding.
Yeah. You're sorry, not necessarily paying direct to you, but uh city manager.
Yes, sir.
When it comes to our budgeting process, I know we can apply for a thousand grants a year, but are we, are we putting in our budget? How much are we going to allocate for these grants? Because it's easy to apply for grants, but if we only have, are we, I'm just saying, from accounting purposes, are we saying that we have one hundred thousand for matching funds? And make sure that we don't go over that hundred thousand because then we start going out of the general fund. I don't even know if we had put that in our pre, this fiscal year budget, not. Do you know about where we stand?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I'll let Crystal explain, during our previous uh budget hearing, we did allocate funding for the MAP grants. What?
The TFP grants and for uh, well, all three TFP grants and the MAP grants. So I had funding, the match set, uh put in the budget for all four of those projects, if I was awarded all four.
Now, total for the TPF projects, if tonight, the commission will approve the waivers, we will, she will submit that to the state. And we, we feel confident that the state will approve the waiver. If for some reason they do not, then we have to come up with approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars. Uh fifty, correct? Fifty-eight thousand. And but the state total amount was for Lovington is about one million dollars, at least five hundred.
For the two different ones and the map, yes, and the map, yes.
So we do have that fifty-eight thousand into the budget, just in case they do not approve the waivers. Now, as in respect to the, the CDBG project, if we're going after, let's say, seven hundred fifty thousand, we have to provide uh seventy-five thousand.
Somewhere in the budget.
Somewhere in like a, that right now is the issue is.
First of all, let's make a budget adjustment.
Correct.
Yeah, for any answer to that, I'm going to figure out, but don't do it before October thirtieth.
No. No, but commission to answer your question, yes, we, and, and we plan to meet with the department directors at the end, um like, end of October, we'll have budget hearings again.
Dr. Martin, I'm sorry to backtrack, uh so you mentioned earlier that uh you, this past week, I'm sorry. Miss, I should have announced it. Mentioned that I had had a budgetary hearing, hearing, that, I'm not sure that's the right word, but again, you met with the different departments, you discussed their budgets, do you want to give a brief? Are we, that, I didn't know if that was part of the uh concerns and deadlines, so.
Well, the, the, we had our, our meetings, we had a total of how many directors, thirteen departments, you know, Commissioner White was involved. And so the, the big question here is, we, we asked each director, you have ten months left. Can, can, your current budget, can you sustain ten months? Now, the issue that came up, there's a, there's a couple of issues, but overtime was one issue. Police department overtime, fire department overtime, public works overtime. And we understand the, the, the demand in the community, the events that we have, we, we understand that. So by going through that process, we, we are able to map out, okay, if, if, let's use a police chief for example, if he's already used twenty-five percent of his overtime, can he sustain the next ten months? Because our goal is, we want them to stay within their budget. We do not want to go outside of that budget and then operate. So it, it's a good process, it's because it helps all of us, it makes us all think, how should I say this? We're all on the same page. Then what can we do to stay within that budget? That's, that's the whole point. But you're right, budget hearings, maybe that's not the proper wording because we discuss other things, personnel, cap rally. For example, yes, for example, with Laura, we looked at, okay, we're going to get funding from the county, how, how's that going to affect the budget? So yes, I, I, Tracy, if you want to add anything, Commissioner White, if you want to add anything to what we accomplished during the budget.
I saw like most of them were doing pretty good with their budget, they're within the seventy-five, they still have seventy-five percent left, except for a few in overtime. They're doing pretty, pretty good.
In your spare time. Uh it would be helpful if, and, and again, not, not now, but uh to kind of show budgetarily, not, maybe not the departments. Uh it would be nice to see that, but if we did an overall and then do a, a accounts receivable, a revenue versus expenses that also would show, you know, our, our budgeted revenue. And if, if, I'm, I'm going off the report she gave us, in which we had eight hundred, the uh GRT was eight hundred and sixty-four thousand sixty-five dollars. Okay, I know whenever we did this, we approximately budgeted six hundred and twenty as an average per month. So obviously, our revenue for August was above that. So for us to be able to see that, then that kind of tends to, and we may have a month, next month, it may be two hundred thousand less than that. So that would kind of show us our average versus a budgetary point, how the expenses are going. And then that helps us to see, okay, you know, uh do we get worried now or do we plan the trip for everybody? That's joking, sorry. But anyway, and again, in your spare time, I know you're heavily in the, but it would be, uh I think for everybody, for the public, everybody, would be quick to show that, yes, there's going to be adjustments, yes, there's going to be pickups and we're going to account for this, but to move forward, it, it'd just be good, and then by the time we do this next year, just what? We'll have a whole lot more experience and have you able to show a little bit. Sorry, I didn't mean backups, it's just that we didn't talk about that. Patrick?
Uh Mayor, Commissioners, I don't have anything new to report, there are comments on to the agenda, I'm just hoping to cover those and get them to stand for questions if you have.
All right. Oh, uh I will take this moment, uh first of all, I would like to commend the cities, uh all employees and all of the things that is going on in our city right now. If you don't know, uh there's a lot of projects that uh we are catching up on, uh we're going to be discussing some of the items. But there, uh there's a lot of initiative and I want to commend each and every department. And we are, we as administration have added a lot of uh work to them through the budgetary process, through things that uh at all, everybody is pretty much new. So it's been a trial by fire and a learning by fire. And I just want to say that we're moving forward, I see it every day. It's never fast enough, it's not fast enough for me, it's not fast enough for the public or whatever, but the fact that we're moving and I, I feel that we are definitely in a good position, a good direction. And uh people are starting to see that and state that. So uh everyone, I'm never really picking on anybody and I don't want you to think that, it's not that. It is concerns that I get from the community. And so uh I'm just trying to answer questions that come up to me. I would like to, one of the projects that I've undertaken is our animal shelter. And we have partnered up with the county, uh we are actually, right now, their primary uh shelter and we are creating a spay and neuter service uh through our current shelter. We are the only one in the county that is stepping out, they're trying to split the county where Hobbs can handle Hobbs and everything south and we handle pretty much Lovington or Lovington and everything north. But right now, we're it. So Laura's done a fabulous job and she has, the, this goes before the county commission on the twenty-second. I expect it should be approved and so there will be a low cost. And that is based upon need, but it is a low cost, no matter what, spay and neuter for in the beginning, probably for the whole county. But it definitely will impact our areas. And in addition to that, there, there's a lot of things going to come from that. We are increasing our, our shelter ability to hopefully care for and transport out animals. So this is a, a really good partnership between the county and the city and uh I, I, I have good uh, I have a great feel for the future of this program and it's just going to grow. And the nice thing is, not for the first time ever, but the first time in a long time, we're kind of leading the pack. So I'd like to say that Laura's done and her crew has done a fabulous job. And this is just one of the items that continues to, to come up, as you hear all the things that are going. So I just want to tell the public that uh we're working, the, this city is working for your behalf, even if it doesn't always seem to. So just, I ask for patience, just like they ask me to have patience. So we're, we're going to get there. And other than that, uh if there's no further comments, we're going to move on. This will bring your time, it's now time for public comment. If, I, we ask that you keep it to three minutes or less, if you can, please come up uh to the podium, state your name, talk and go from there and uh if anybody has the want, now's your time. You still want to go first?
Mr. Mayor and City Commission, just on the shelter, I'd like for you to know that uh we are, are uh getting monies throughout the, from the community and from other parts of Texas and wherever else that really shows us sex and lets the word out. And each day, we are receiving monies to help us uh be able to spay and neuter the dogs that come and cats that come into our shelter. And that's a good feeling, but what we really need, because Shelley Saxon has been volunteering her time to take dogs and cats to and from Midland. We do, and these are for the animals that need to be taken to another city to be adopted. We need help in getting these animals over to Midland to get them their shots and, and spay and neuter. So if anybody has. So if anybody has the time to drive the van or provide a van, we could certainly use it. Because Shelley was telling me the other day that she was picking up dogs that weighed anywhere from 50 pounds to 65 pounds, and getting them into their crate and getting them back to Lovington safely. So if any of you had the time or would like to do something like this, please contact Laura, and we'll see what we can do about helping out that. Thank you.
Anyone? Seeing that, thank you. All right, this is a nice discussion and planning is only more. Okay?
So my members, Randy Pettigrew, Betty Price, and Brian Cooper are all, their terms are out. There were, so we were a little late getting this into you. But I have not heard that they, I mean, all three of them, my best, that they be reappointed. So if you have anyone you want to replace or anything, that will be on the next position meeting. Just know that that is coming up to reappoint or reassign those three positions on our board. And we do have one we are replacing with that, yeah, that is in an action.
Thank you. The discussion of the, sorry, here, it's Jenny, do you want, I don't know, are you doing it on me, or what do you have to do?
I can just let you guys know that I gave you the two letters that we have seen so far, and so.
Over the past few months, I have been contacted by various agencies, realtors, presidents, whatever, asking are we, do we have any plans for Troy Harris there? And I finally said, if you have something you would like to propose, then basically get a letter of intent stating what, didn't have to exactly what you're gonna do, but at least kind of what's the purpose of the building to be used for. We also look at leases are for sale, and so we obviously have some interest in the building. These two are the only two that gave letter of intent, so I, we've talked about this briefly in the past. Do we have a want from the commission to put out an RFP from, to see what we could get for this particular piece of property? There are others, I know, the solar facility that's going south of the town had originally proposed leasing the building. I think they stated it may be a little big for there, even though it would have been leased for five years. We do know there is damage to the building from that deal. Obviously, from our previous discussions, we did not get enough money to repair all of our buildings. So it is, can be a liability, it can be an asset. So basically, this is, do we want to put out a RFP? For those who first.
With the previous city manager, you made the comment of seeing about extending City Hall over there as far as, for some facility, if it would be water, if it be offices or whatever. And I was wondering as far as with moving forward with City Hall, if there's any kind of entertainment as far as going to that building, moving to that building. So that's a question I'm putting out there, because it was brought up before. I'm asking you that.
Get a bigger commission.
So that's a question I'm asking you, because that was put forth before. So that's something that you even thought about, or?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, the only discussion I had was maybe we'll be leasing it over there, but I knew that was not, that would not work. But right now, I do not see any room for expansion of City Hall. Like Commissioner White mentioned, Mayor mentioned maybe a bigger area for commission meetings. But I haven't had any board that way.
Right. So the only reason I'm asking is because if we do this, then that's not an option, then.
Right.
Unless you lease the building or whatever.
We, we lost animal control, they're not in the building, so we're short of staff. Plan at all.
Yeah, that was brought up. I just wanted to put that out there before we weighed in on this and made a decision on this.
I've been here when we didn't have it as part of the city, and we do have it as part of the city. It's had a function in both, both times. I mean, originally it was built by a bank, to be a bank, and served that for many, many years. And then they pulled out in the city, I don't even know, did we buy it, was it gifted? Did we not, did we buy it? Okay, I've forgotten exactly how we acquired. But due to COVID, then it's been done effectively, it housed three of the entities, or extended auxiliary entities. Prior to that, you know, what's everybody's feelings? This is so, because we either move forward or just say, we're not gonna move on at all, because, you know, there's, there's a lot of interest in the building, not city-related at this time. And if we go out far, we don't have to say it, but at least we could see where we stood. So it, that's the reason it's on the agenda.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Could you put the chamber back into the building? And Main Street, so we can actually have physical business on Main Street opposed to being in the town hall right now? Because a lot of people have approached me, how come we're in the town halls? I said, well, you know, the city has financial issues that are the center of the building. But I think it's very fair that we be on Main Street. But at the same time, you know, due to roofing issues, you know, I mean, I don't know how the city would address that. Because either way, the city's gonna have the best issue, either repairing the building, if you're gonna lease it, or to sell it, they can't sell that business.
You can sell it, it is, you can sell. Yeah, you can't, you're not gonna get, pull back apart, that's the thing.
So maybe would be something that the mission would consider? I mean, since it's not being used? I mean, that would get us out of the, out of the corner of the, of the town hall, get Main Street out of the closet upstairs, and mean.
Well, all three entities are here, so let's throw it to all three of you, would y'all have some input to that?
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me on this conversation. As you guys know, our organization's goal is to revitalize downtown. That means bringing in businesses and creating an entertainment and dining district. That is our economic transformation strategy, and as an organization, that is what we will always push for. One of the reasons why we had actually moved over to the museum, aside from, you know, reducing utility costs, was actually assisting the Lee County Museum. That is another auxiliary agency that definitely needs the support from other organizations that the buildings are sometimes forgotten, and often the number one thing I always hear is, I had no idea any of these things existed or were in this building. And so the real reason why we wanted to go over there was to actually help the Lee County Museum and actually drive people into those spaces. The town hall is a wonderful venue that really allows us to host a lot of different activities. We've had our after-hours networks thing. We've also done a lot of different, we increased, we've done workshops, we've done a variety of different things. That has really benefited, in my opinion, the Lee County Museum. While I understand that it is a historic building, it comes with a lot of issues, and it's definitely dilapidated, we're not denying that by any means. But for us in particular, seeing as we have talked to some of those letters of interest that you received, we had actually reached out or talked to one of those businesses, and they are very interested. One of the things that Main Streets like to do is actually not have government agencies on Main Streets, because the reason is, you actually go to Google for those things, right? It's not hard to find a City Hall, it's not hard to find the police department. It is, however, hard to find a retail business, it is hard to find a small business. Those are things that are actually difficult, and the reason for them being locked made is that if you're a driver by, then you can stop and pull over and be able to actually spend some money. So while we're open to the discussion, for us in particular, we'd love to see the MRA be used in this occasion and actually be able to house a small business that has been here for more than 20 years. Thank you.
I'm looking with the EDC, as most of you are aware, I am located at the legal building between McDonald's and Sonic, and I have been there since March of this year. It's very quiet, friends there, but we are paying rent. If you do decide to eventually sell it, you would have to look for a place maybe for storage, because my supply room is still in there, I don't have a supply, we don't have a closet or anything like that at the legal building now. My president and the chamber president have met and have discussed this option potentially. I wasn't a big fan when we were asked to leave, I really, I've been there for over 10 years, and I thought the space worked for all three of us. But it's really truly a two-year decision, I know that it was due to cut costs. I mean, we are both paying, I mean, I'm paying rent, and I hope the chamber's looking to move out, and they are gonna pay rent, I mean, potentially, what about if the rent that we're paying now paid to you, and you can help with the utility costs of that? It's just a thought. The EDC is open to it, but I mean, we are, we do have a location, so whatever's up to us.
I think on the subject is, I would just like to see the building utilized. If it's, if it's utilized by the city for the betterment of the city, right? If we have no plan as far as, I don't see any, any reason for the city to own a building, even if we have more than one, that is not utilized for anything, and it becomes a liability for the city. So I'm hoping, my vote, if, if we get to that point in the future, is for the betterment of, of the city. We have no purpose for it, somebody can utilize it, then I, then great. We have a purpose for it, and we're in that direction, and let's get it used. So that's, Mary, you have something to say?
Well, I was gonna say, well, we decided there, and certain ones of us is in, by then, and then people said, where is the chamber? They said, they're used to going into towns, and the chambers is on the main where they can locate it. And I said, well, it's down on Central, tell them where to go. But they said, it should be nice if it's back on Main Street where they find it. And our bit, do you know which one I'm talking about? They would like to see it back over here in Troy Harris, where it used to be. And I think it work better over there than it does in the town hall, because that's a museum. And if people want to go see a museum, they're gonna go, they want to go to the chamber and learn about places, its surroundings, which you can't do over there. And I'm agreeing that y'all need to move back over there and Troy Harris building. And Molly, you know how long I've been here, I'm used to about the places that have been, two banks and everything.
Okay, my thoughts, Mayor, on that, it would be, the cost of rebuilding any building right now, if we're selling, and we're, two years from now, we need a building, so the cost is probably about $6 million, as you will see the matchup, or cost of $6 million. We don't have $6 million, so I know that now we have plans of most likely doing away with U Center with another program. So I, I would recommend us hold on to it to the purpose that we may have, we may utilize it. I just, I just feel like in two or three years, we don't have an option, because we have to come up with $6 million, and we need to do something, or we're gonna be six, another bond, with a $6 million bond. So I think it's, it's probably the, the only buildings that we own, that is the newest building. Out of all the buildings we have, that is the newest building.
And it's only 40 years.
Yeah. I, I, I would say is, we try to hang on to it, it's a card that we need to hang on to. Because I, I feel that if we needed to, need to raise or something, we have to do something, and we're, we're gonna be out looking for a bond to buy a new building, or a design to build. And this whole area, it's, it's been here too long, nothing, I don't think it was underutilized to begin with. For a long time, we're gonna do, move the water department on it. The, instead of moving the motor vehicle department over there, we bought a building for $250,000. Should have renovated this, you know, it should have been one of them, consolidating everything into one building instead of four or five. They made that decision, it was a poor decision to, or it should have been brought here. Because it was this back, Roman, and should have been. So I think it's just been important to utilize, and I think we, we, I just feel strongly that it it's gonna cost us more if we ever have to add on or something like that, it was, is to keep that.
Loving, Lovington can roll, and you might need that building for City Hall. More staff.
Well, I would like to move the commission chambers over there, if nothing else, so that we could have a little bit more room for the, for our residents that want to come in. I mean, we're cramped here, okay, so, you know, that's, well, well, it's not even, I'm not even sure it's big enough, but it's a lot bigger than this. It's deeper, so we can definitely, yeah. Okay, the point is, let's pick a direction, okay, let's, let's lay someone to bed if we can. We have the option to, again, see what the, what it possibly could benefit. Or we can just say, okay, now we're gonna move in a direction where we can consolidate some of our entities, whether we can possibly change up the way we operate a little bit, but let's move on. But we also have to look at the, the cost of getting the buildings back in shape. That's gonna, if we, unless we are just going to use it effectively like it is, just do maintenance, just do the repairs that are needed, we're still gonna spend a lot of money if we ever want to make it something different than what we're using, so.
The thing is with the roof itself, and I got an argument, it was looked at for the improvements, but that just involves, I figure, the outside. Because the reason that the entities were moved down, I believe the electric bill was like $1,200, $1,500 a month, somewhere in that area. Right? So, I mean, that's why they were moved out of that building, because the ceiling inside of the building just lets all the hot air go out, the air conditioning, whole air go out. So that needs to be addressed, taken care of, because if not, you're gonna be spending $120,000 in just electric bills, you know, so, I mean, that's something that needs to really be looked into as far as putting entities in there to take care of that.
Do we know what the utility costs are now? Because the utilities, whatever, cut off, the electricity, everything, the ACs are still running in there. Do you know what the costs are? No, I don't.
Yeah, not like the ladies that were offering it, either on all night, the AC on night. I don't know who it was, but.
So we can, so why don't we use that one coming to put it back into the building to upgrade it?
Well, so a lease is the problem because uh, Mr. Martin, I mean, Mr. Munoz said, we're gonna have to fix the building to make it leakable, you know? And uh, that, even if we don't accommodate what they want to do with it, we're gonna have to upgrade it, so.
But letting it sit is not.
Letting it sit is not.
Empty buildings die.
Well, we invite problems with empty buildings.
Well, I think, I think we just haven't been to that, got to that point where we can make a decision where we're gonna do that, you know, we've been trying to get something else. Now we're at that point, we can make a decision on uh, how to utilize that product. Yes, we, we. So Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commission, so we have two individuals that are interested in purchasing the building or leasing it?
Uh, well, I'm.
One is leasing.
One is leasing.
Okay, I know, hang on, I'm gonna get to the end of this, but.
That was wrong, my number. 14,400. And that was also wrong in my September, there's long story bases, that's a pretty long. But I thought I heard him say three September. About $14,000 in electric fees per year. That's pretty much, I think, what they were looking at when they were in there. 1400, 14,000 per year.
Okay. Okay, uh. But we don't have any. So. Well, yeah, yeah, we're not, I mean, I just, do we put it on as an act? Part of me just, if we, if we, if we agree to hold on to this, I say we put some sort of timeline where we reevaluate this in the near future.
I think we need to look and see what it's gonna cost to fix that roof.
On the other side.
Right, yeah, I think we need to.
Before we, before we really, I don't know if we're probably putting it out, you know?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna need to know all that information, so.
Right.
Okay, um, I think that's a good idea.
And the, and the, maybe we need to fix it so it isn't like the other major, it was sitting around with really dear.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I looked over and I, I thought, sorry, I didn't have to have someone go and do a complete assessment to determine the total cost. Can we put together a team to do that?
Do that too?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And why don't we, right now, let's look at doing an assessment of the building and maybe come up with a reasonable priority list. This has to be done, you know, these items have to be done and then these items need to be done and then we go from there. I'm sorry. Oh, maybe you don't, oh, sorry. All right, uh, timeline, Dr. Martins.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commission, this presentation will take me about an hour. And so what I would like to do is just pass this out to the commission and pass the commission if they would like to add any items and then I would like the next meeting to both.
I think that's great.
Because well, I'll give each commissioner a copy and if there's anything you would like to add.
If some might have in the back there.
Okay.
Do you need one?
Yeah.
You have any?
And if you would go through the list and if there's anything that you would like to add, you can let me know that Jay Dean can email me or call me and we can have. We tried to do it the next commission meeting is go through it and more, take off what we've already accomplished and then just go through each department, so.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and throw out three items that I would like to have added just because I may not remember to tell you all.
Okay.
Um, I had spoken to uh, Chief Miranda that we have a couple of grow houses that are around our Loews and Square and uh, the, uh, the adjacent neighbors are heavily impacted by these grow houses as far as odor. Um, if you haven't been in one of the buildings next to them or even by the front door, then it's, it's an excessive nuisance. And I think that we have the ability to enact a, a code of enforcement on them for a nuisance odor at the least, and so I'd like to add that to the list, which I guess would be.
I'm sorry, you need one of these?
Uh, I did, oh, okay, yeah, I did. And it would go under, I guess, law enforcement. Okay, uh, my, I'm sorry. Well, there, I can't change, there's, there's an ordinance on.
So there's a odor nuisance.
Yes, and this is odor. I've dealt with it in Fort Worth for many, many years, I assure you, I know.
Because we have been out there according to Christine and they are in state compliance. However, if there's a nuisance odor next door, how do we measure that? How do we determine? She suspected the premises, they're cooperative and according to her, they are compliant.
But I understand that, I do. But uh, you know, if, if your neighbor had a pig farm in his backyard, if y'all were both outside city limits, obviously, then you should.
I agree.
Okay, we probably, that, so it's going on this concern list so we can work towards some sort of a solution. All right, uh, my second item, uh, that I would like to add to the fire department is uh, uh, bringing up the uh, changing the level that of our. I'm sorry, I, so thank you, I have NPS going through on, anyway, we're all the wrong ones uh, from our current, I know we've had discussions, but I don't have it right now. I just want to put it on there so that we can talk about it the next meeting. And um, I had an individual call me this week, which I totally agree with. Several years ago, we enacted some ordinances, or we attempted to enact some ordinance for the amount of truck traffic that we allowed inside. This is vehicles that are uh, large that either are parked on our streets, are parked on our lawns or whatever. And see, there was, thank you, Commissioner, he'll remember that and how that all went down, but anyway, I'd like to put it on there. And I guess again, that would probably under code enforcement. I would look at coming up with a solution for some of this. It impacts our, our streets, it impacts a lot of things, it impacts neighborhoods, so. We can look at that. That's all, those are all coming from the community, so. Uh, open the door, if anybody would like to see.
So the, the trucks that are on the streets, that's a police issue. If they're on a property, it is code. So that's where.
I don't have a close place on the residential. Right, yeah.
And I think what it was, if we want to address those fines, because the fines are sold minimum, they're just paying the fines, a $25 fine, we should just make that $500 every fine. Or maybe move out, you know, but now anything.
I would like to, you know. I would like to create a place, a parking ride for trucks. I think that would go over very well.
I had plans submitted to me for a truck rental facility, for a truck park.
Okay.
And I have been speaking with a person who's interested in property and working to purchase the property and is working to put the designs together. For that, it would be a gated trucking area. The trucks would go in, park in there, they'd also have room for the private vehicle to be parked in there. It would be a secure location, code gated codes.
I'll have to.
Um, so that's something that somebody else has looked at too and I'm, I'm working with them to try to do something.
I think. Perfect, okay. We don't have, like I said, you don't have to submit ideas at this point, but if you'll just.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, for resolution 2022 dash 080 approval to amend the animal sufferably stream to the embedded services.
Yeah, we have a motion in the second for, this is an item, we're just going to discussion, I'm sorry. Uh, this is an item that was on our agenda two meetings ago, we tabled it. We actually should have put this in our last meeting, uh, but it did not make the agenda, so. Uh, unless there's a discussion, I think we just need to move forward, really vote on this to. Uh, we have another agreement that will be submitted. Yes, that will be submitted, I believe, at possibly the next meeting, so. This is just to eliminate it, we need to. Shannon.
So can you restate that motion because there's not clarification on that.
A big motion open up that.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to amend that first motion.
We're not amended.
No. Wait, just kill it.
No, that, and that's what I'm saying, we need a motion for Ms. Burke's motion to remove it or to deny it.
We're just.
Okay, okay.
We're just gonna kill, kill the resolution.
You got Shannon, you're good.
Okay, Shannon.
Commissioner, vote.
No.
Commissioner Tridio. Mr. White, no, you're wrong.
No.
I'd like to make a, make a motion for resolution 2022 dash 092 approval of the final year-end budget adjustment bar number two.
We have a motion in second for this resolution, we need a sketch. I'm sorry. Does anybody want to talk about it?
I think we are discussing.
I do too. I just want to make sure we got everything. Okay, Shannon.
Commissioner White. Yes, Commissioner Bow.
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2022 dash 093 approval of the final quarter for the year ending June 30th of 2022.
Yeah, motion in second for resolution 93, uh, we need a discussion. I'm assuming we're gonna go into the free chance to pay for the budget, so. Shannon.
Commissioner Tridio.
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Bow.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2022 dash 094 approval of the final year, fiscal year 2023 budget.
Motion in second for this resolution, any discussion? Shannon, vote.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Bow.
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor, a motion for resolution 2022 dash 095, resolution authorizing the assignment of authorized officer agents with project number SAP 22 dash G4062 dash STBR Capital Outway Project, Lovington Wells Water System.
We have a motion in the second of this resolution. Any discussion? Okay, okay. Shannon.
Commissioner Bow.
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes. Mayor Tridio.
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Tridio, Mayor Roberts.
Mayor, I'd like to make motion for resolution 2022 dash 096, approval of appointments to the planning and zoning board. Is that for one appointment?
For one, yeah, that's for one.
Approval of appointment to the planning and zoning.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's what I was waiting for.
Wait, a motion in the second on this resolution, sketch, Miss Bow.
Yes, I have four individuals that show an interest in being on the planning and zoning board. Madas Saccido, Eric Balderez, Chuck Johnson, and Elaine Behill all put their names forth to be on the planning and zoning. Yes, I only have the one spot, it is the spot that we lost a member due to recent deaths, so.
And this is, it expires, sorry, on the 2000, 2024, sorry.
Yes.
It's hard to find a club to name, you know? Beat up by the.
Would you like to say something on your behalf?
Like, and then if someone knows the others, she can do something on their behalf. So. We don't have.
She had to leave.
That's what makes you laugh.
Well, I can say, I know, um, so like Madas Saccido, um, the thing about being on the planning and zoning board, you have to be able to understand code. And it's very difficult to understand code. So uh, that's one of my hardest things to teach my new board members as Scott was through this. Um, so I know Madas Saccido is very familiar with code. Um, she, she knows our city code pretty well. Um, Eric Balderez was uh, brought in. He was asked by one of my other commissioners, Brian Cooper, so I don't know this gentleman personally. Um, Chuck John is electrician, local electrician. He's very familiar with how state codes work, which helps you when you have to realize how other codes work. Um, Elaine Behill has been with the Keep Loving to Beautiful and a member of the city for many years, many, many years. So um, it's just up to you guys on who you want to appoint.
I'm sorry. What? I didn't know. Motion to add something, so.
In my presence for 2022 dash 096 approval appointment of Elaine Behill for the planning and zoning board.
I have a motion in second for appointing Elaine Behill to the board. Any discussion? Okay, we'll have a vote.
Commissioner White. Um, yes. Commissioner Tridio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bow.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Welcome aboard, Elaine. Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2022 dash 097, set approval request a waiver for the Mexico Department of Transportation in the Mexico DOT transportation project. But PTF project number one.
Have a motion in second. Chris, have we talked about this well enough or do you want to add something more to it?
If you guys need me to add more to it, this is for the waiver, so we don't have to pay. If you guys need me to add more to it, this is for the waiver, so we don't have to pay that five percent match. This is what I'm submitting the request for.
Shannon.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes. Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner, just quickly. Resolution twenty twenty two dash zero nine eight, request a waiver for the New Mexico Department of Transportation transportation project fund, project number two.
We have a motion in second, this resolution, sketch. Shannon, again, unless you just add something.
Unless you have a question, it's another one of those.
Shannon.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Kristen.
Yes.
Just remember, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash zero nine nine, authorized signatures and reconstitution.
Second.
Motion in second, this resolution.
We're just changing signatures.
Okay. I seen that, okay. I'm rather sketchy, all right. Shannon?
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes, Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash zero one zero zero approval of a authorized signature of the C C O.
Second. Motion in second, any discussion? Hey, Shannon?
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for this resolution twenty twenty two dash zero, I'm one zero one, approval of the Earl Ronald Softball Complex Lease Agreement. Fund to the municipal schools.
Yeah, motion in second on this resolution, uh we need a discussion.
And what we're doing is just proving what we what we have.
Yeah, I think to get the ball going, because we're kind of stuck in a, we kind of like what we like, they might like what they like, we just, somebody needs to knock it over and then see.
I like it.
And it's across the second line, if we're nice.
All right, Shannon.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes. Mayor Roberts?
Yes. Okay. Any discussions, questions?
But like make a motion for accountability.
We have a motion in second for approval of the accountability, we discussion. Any questions, anything you would like to say?
Everything's very good, I think we can play on if you guys have.
Shannon?
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Yes. Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Yes. And with that, we have exhausted the agenda, may the. Can you get me the last part of that?
Remind you of that.